You'll have to catch up, Greg.
Go ahead.
Good morning. Today's notice has been given of a regular meeting of Commissioners Court of Grimes County, Texas. Today is Wednesday, September 15th, 2021. We are meeting at the Grimes County Annex at 114 West Buffington Avenue in Anderson, Texas. It is 9:00 a.m. I would ask that if you would, please rise for the invocation and remain standing for the pledge of the U.S. into the Texas flag, and I'm going to ask Brother Charles Compton, if you will, to lead, send that prayer, sir.
Thank you. Let us pray. Father God, we come, first of all, thanking you for this day. Thank you for giving us an opportunity to share in your business, because, Father, all of this is your business. First of all, rest your blessings, and we thank you, Father, that the miss that we had for this hurricane, that, Father, we nearly missed, but we thank you for your protection. Then, Father, we petition the courts of heaven, Father, for the blessings for this court. We pray for your wisdom. We pray for the understanding. We pray for everything will be solved, because, Father, that is your will. We thank you for the judge. We thank you for the commissioners. We thank you for the clerk. We thank you, Father, for the auditors. We thank you for the lawyers that is in place, that everything will be ran just like it is in heaven. And when it's all said and done this day, you will say to this court, "Well done," in Jesus' name. Amen.
Thank you, sir.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Honor the Texas flag. I pledge allegiance to the state of Texas, one state under God, one and indivisible. Would you be seated, please? Just so the public knows, as of September the first, the governor released his restrictions on open meetings, and you are certainly welcome back. You've been welcomed back in our courtroom for a very long time, although it's been kind of a limited number. But to your comfort level, you can wear a mask or not wear a mask. That's your choice. You can sit beside somebody or not sit beside somebody. That's your choice, okay? So, we welcome you back if you're online and anxious to get back in face-to-face with the court. We do this on the first and the third Wednesdays at 9:00 a.m. With that, I'm going to move to public comments. We look forward to hearing from our citizens. If you wish to share any thoughts, you have submitted a sheet. We would ask that you limit your comments to two minutes, if possible. So, with that, I'm going to call Ms. Samantha Comits from the Anderson Volunteer Fire Department, and she wants to talk about their upcoming cook-off.
Good morning, Judge and Commissioners. We're having a cook-off on October the first and second at the Grimes County Fairgrounds. We are in need of sponsorships, and Judge does have them. We're needing table sponsors. That Friday evening, we're going to have tables set up for all of our sponsors, and we're going to feed y'all. It's going to be fish fry. We're also going to have a dance starting at 7:30. Well, 7:30 feed y'all. 8:30 dance. We'll have the band until 12:30. We're also in need of taste judges that Saturday for all categories. I have a list and contact information. You can contact myself, any of the volunteer fire department members to sign up to be taste judges. And I appreciate y'all letting me talk.
You're more than welcome.
And I have copies of this, if anybody would like them. And I would love for our commissioners, county officials, community to come help us and support us.
Thank you very much.
Thank you.
If you'd like to leave your flyers just on the corner of the counter here.
Okay, that'll be awesome.
Right there. And then, folks, as they leave court, they can pick one up.
Thank you.
Thank you, ma'am. I don't have any other forms. I am going to take liberty with a public comment of my own. Commissioner Walker, would you take one and pass one down to Commissioner Cox? What you have in front of you is a piece of the ribbon from the ribbon cutting that occurred last Friday. And the ribbon cutting was for the three bridges that are on Highway 105. They cross the Brazos River, crossing the Navasota River, and the name of the creek slips me. Anybody recall the creek name? But it's there, too. It's the third. It's one of the three bridges on the new addition. They were supposed to text that was going to have that changeover occur yesterday, but I think because of the potential of Nicholas joining our community for a couple of days, Deputy Cook said that the sign had been modified that they were going to open it this Friday. So, if they stay on schedule, one, be alert if you go west on 105 from Grimes County, or if you're coming east out of Washington County. Just be careful. There is going to be a traffic pattern change, but that old bridge, those old bridges have served us since the 1950s.
Yes.
And they've served us well, although if you pass an 18-wheeler in the opposite direction, you know how crowded that bridge gets real quick. So, these bridges have, the bridges that are open, have wider lanes, and also have shoulders in the event of breakdown, which is something we didn't have. So, I don't know if you like memorabilia, but there's your piece of the ribbon to have and to hold. If there are any citizens that would like to have that nostalgia, let me know, and I'll have a few more here. All right. Commissioners, any comments on your part? Then, if there are none, I'm going to take liberty. I've had a request to take Agenda Item Number 11. So, if you would look at Agenda Item Number 11, and I'm going to make that 2A, and I would like to address that before we go to consent agenda items. Sir, if you're with me on the agenda, Agenda Item Number 11, consider and take action to approve the early purchase of a Chevrolet Tahoe for the District Attorney's Office, which was originally intended for the FY 2022 budget. Investigator Wren is here this morning, but I wanted to bring that up because of the changes that are in the consent agenda. Investigator Wren, good morning.
Good morning. For the take, John Wren, District Attorney's Office, Grimes County. So, the reason we're here this morning, our office, as the court is aware, is up for a new investigator position to go into effect October 1st, and a new vehicle. So, middle of August, I started looking at the vehicle situation, because our office has already found an employee, someone that works at the sheriff's office. They're supposed to come to us October 1st. So, October 1st, we're actually going to have an employee physically in place. Need to make sure we have a vehicle for them to drive to be able to work, because we don't have an extra one. So, start looking, and the same thing that y'all hear about, everybody hears about in the public domain of vehicles, is even worse with government vehicles. Trying to physically get your hands on a government Tahoe is not easy. So, I called the guy that we've bought from the last couple of times, Todd Green. I don't know if he's in here. Gave me a couple of contacts. I called them. Everybody kept telling me the same thing. "I'll have one. I'll have one. Can't get you one until January or February." That's not going to work. We can't go five months without, with a new employee and a vehicle. So, finally, I resorted to calling GM Corporate. Their Texas rep called me, and she helped me locate one. As it happens, lucked out. It's in Houston area. It's not across the state. So, called them, got a price, begged and pleaded, and got them to agree to hold it for me for two weeks, so I could get on an agenda and come today. So, what our office is asking for is for permission to purchase the vehicle that we are to be approved for effective October 1st, to be allowed to purchase it two weeks early today, so that we can get a vehicle while we can get our hands on one and are not in that situation of if they sell it before October 1st, I have no idea when we would even be able to get another one. And then, we will have a brand-new employee with nothing to drive. The cost of the vehicle is $38.7. We had previously asked the court for $34, $34.5, something like that, to be budgeted. Andrea has asked me to come up and ask y'all for the amount that we originally asked for, which was $34, and she is going to make up the balance out of asset forfeiture, so that there is no additional expense to account.
And I'll remind the court that I believe in the first meeting of the month, we approved submitting a letter to that dealership saying that it was our intention to approve this, but if we didn't approve it, then they can sell the vehicle. But that was for the two-week hold. Is that correct?
That was for, I believe, a different.
Oh, that's Kat's vehicle. Okay.
Yes. But, yeah, everybody's dealing with the same same problem.
Same thing. Okay.
So, that's what I'm here to ask for. I'm just here to ask for permission to purchase the vehicle that would be approved for October 1st, to be funded for now, so that we can get it while we can get our hands on it.
Okay. Adam Oliver, to, we've seen this before. Wren?
We have. We've seen it before in the past, and the budget has already been reduced. An extra question.
The 22-25.
Do you have any problems with?
I don't. We're kind of in a different predicament these days. It's very difficult. And if he's getting, if you guys are going to approve that additional position, he's going to need a vehicle to drive. And so, waiting half a year, five months, half a year, that doesn't seem very efficient.
I know we spoke, Pete talked about the letter, and other departments were going to act, request the letter also, including our sheriff's department, but they were doing an inventory, correct?
Yes. Yes. So, the only one who submitted a letter was Kat.
Okay. So, this is a unique situation to, to the DA department that we're looking at today.
Yes. Yes. The sheriff's office, they have the vehicles, and they have vehicles to keep running. They're older and everything, but they do have, the D's office, I'm not aware of any additional vehicles you have to. So, it's a different position, and police vehicles, certain types of vehicles, they're harder to find versus just to drive.
This is kind of an emergency situation, where we have an employee coming on. We can't have a vehicle for them for five months. That's, that's not good. If there are no further questions, I'm going to take action and approve the early purchase of the Chevrolet Tahoe for the District Attorney's Office, which was originally intended for fiscal year 2022. First motion before the court on Agenda Item Number 11 by Commissioner David Dobianski, seconded by Commissioner Chad Mallett. Is there further discussion?
I just want a comment, I guess. We haven't voted on the budget, so I might be contingent on the budget passing this later this morning?
Well, it'd be contingent on us approving the budget for the investigator, yes. But the monies for the vehicle have been removed out of the budget, so your point's taken. So, do you want to make an amendment to the motion?
No, I'm just making an observation.
Any further discussion? That's a fair observation, Commissioner. With that, all in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Opposed? That motion carries?
Thank y'all. Thank y'all very much.
With that, we'll get back on the schedule. We'll go to consent agenda items. On the agenda, number three, road and bridge. Consideration of possible approval of a waterline installation permit for Wixson Creek SUD on County Road 180N Precinct 2, and authorize the county judge as signatory. That's our attachment number three. Agenda item number four, consider and take action to approve the treasurer's list of claims and bills. Consent agenda item number five, consider and take action to approve payroll. Consent agenda item number six, consider and take action to approve budget amendments and/or line item transfers, of which we have one, two, three. And that would take us down to Agenda Item Number seven. Any questions or comments on consent agenda items number three, four, five, and six, Commissioners?
I do have a question. You mentioned earlier that that vehicle was in consent agenda items, but.
No, I misspoke. I had a request from the auditor to bring that up before we got into the consent agenda items on the vehicle for the DA.
And courthouse security, that's a separate, do you have a tape from Ryan?
Yes, ma'am.
If there are no further questions, then I made the motion that we approve consent agenda items three, four, five, and six.
There's a motion before the court on consent agenda items number three, four, five, and six by Commissioner Barbara Walker, seconded by Commissioner Philip Cox. Is there further discussion? Hearing on, all in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Those carry. We'll go to Agenda Item Number Seven, American Legion McCluskey Post 640, Presentation of MIA POW Day Proclamation, our attachment number seven.
Good morning, Judge.
Good morning.
Good morning, Commissioners. My name is Steve Stram. I'm the commander of Post McCluskey Post 640 in American Legion. This Friday, September 17th, was set aside by Congress as Constitution Citizens Day, a day to reflect on what the United States Constitution stands for and represents to all of us, and recognize our responsibilities as American citizens in respecting, preserving, and defending it. Coincidentally and appropriately, this Friday is also the third Friday in September. They take that the Congress has set aside to remember those citizens that chose to protect the freedom and liberty of our Constitution and were sent to foreign lands in its defense, never to return home. The American Legion McCluskey Post presents the following proclamation to the citizens of the Grimes County, in honor and remembrance of those still serving in their conflicts. And whereas, the American Legion is committed to achieving a full accounting of all POWs and MIAs from the Gulf War, the Vietnam War, Cold War, Green War, and World War II. This means returning living POWs, the reparation of their remains, and the finding a convincing evidence why neither of these is possible. And whereas, the month of September is designated as a remembrance month for POWs and MIAs, and September 17th, 2021, is National POW MIA Recognition Day. And whereas, on September 17th, 2021, in honor of National POW MIA Recognition Day, many Americans take time to remember those who were prisoners of war and those who are missing in action, as well as their families. And whereas, the members of the American Legion McCluskey Post 640 will hold a short ceremony in remembrance of our nation's prisoners of war and missing in action from all wars. And whereas, the missing man table will be displayed at the American Legion Post 640 on Friday, September 17th, 2021, from 11:00 a.m. to 2:00 p.m. at 415 Hill Street, Anderson. And the POW fly will be flown at that address on that day of remembrance.
Therefore, I Joe F. III, Judge of Grimes County, Texas, do hereby declare the month of September as a remembrance month of POW MIAs and September 17th, 2021, as National POW MIA Recognition Day. Thank you. With the other two gentlemen, I know you look for the public. Would you identify yourselves? Jay and Gary?
I'm Agent T. Gary Williamson.
I'm Jay Lafferty. I'm a veteran service officer for Grimes County and also a service officer for the post.
Thank you all three for what you do.
Thank you.
Appreciate you very much. Thank you all for your service also. We will now go to Agenda Item Number Eight, and we have 4H proclamation. Who's watching the baby today?
His grandmother.
His grandmother. Okay. Thank God for grandmothers and grandfathers.
Exactly. Good morning, Judge, Commissioners. Unfortunately, we did not have any of our youth that were able to attend today for the 4H proclamation, so you all are honored by my presence this morning. I'm here to ask that you all proclaim the week of October 3rd through the 9th, National 4H Week in Grimes County. During that week, our kids, they go out through the schools, through their clubs. They proclaim 4H. They announce 4H. They talk about 4H, try to get everyone involved in the program. Tell us, tell them, their friends, family, what it's all about. And at the end of National 4H Week on October 9th, there, it will be a big community service project. Our kids are actually going to discuss what kind of project they want to do on our upcoming council meeting this Sunday. And once that's approved in our county council meetings, then we will put forth the effort to make sure that happens on October 9th for the county and the community and everything like that. We do have some exciting stuff coming up for 4H. We, this year, we will have a Clover Kids program that we're starting, and we already have about 30 kids signed up. The Clover Kids program is kids through, kinder through second grade, who aren't quite of age to compete as a regular 4H member, which is third grade through seniors in high school. So, excited for that program and a lot of project area workshops coming up. So, but I would appreciate y'all proclaiming National 4H Week in this county.
Will you or Allen be presenting to us a proclamation for that declaration?
I do.
Be that that?
I have them right here.
Oh, okay. Great.
I do have them right here for y'all to sign, and one copy will stay here, and then we will frame the other copy at our office.
Okay.
And that's all I have.
Commissioners, any questions, comments? Okay. Thank you.
Thank you.
With that, we'll go to Agenda Item Number 12, Grimes County Sheriff's Department. I don't see Chief Todd Green, but I see Chief.
I'm taking his place.
Sergeant Smith?
And so is Captain.
Captain Robinson.
Good morning. Thank you for letting me be here. I'm here to present our agreement with the school districts with Anderson Shiro and Iola ISD. If y'all don't have copies, I have copies.
Let me read the agenda items.
Oh, sorry. See, I was getting myself.
That's all right. No, no, no. Consider, Agenda Item Number 12, consider and take action to approve the SRO, School Resource Officer Agreements between Grimes County and Iola ISD, Navasota ISD, and Anderson Shiro CISD, and authorize the county judge as signatory. That will be our attachment number 12, Commissioners. Please continue.
Do y'all have copies of the contracts? I'll be happy to, y'all, okay. So, I'm here just to present the agreements and have them approved with Anderson Shiro. That's the school district that I serve. I've been serving that since 2007, when our program initially started, and the agreement with Iola, who Deputy Andrew Freud services, and Navasota High Point, which Deputy Cody Crutchfield services. Nothing's changed. The school, to my knowledge, is pleased with the program, and they continue to request our services. I don't have much to add, so if y'all want to ask me questions, I'll be happy to answer anything that you may have.
Well, the School Resource Officer, just for the published knowledge, I think Navasota ISD is right at 3,000 students enrolled, and Anderson Shiro is right at 900 or bouncing off of 900.
Yes, sir. 920. It's approximately 920.
And Iola, I'm not real sure, but it's right between 300 and 400. I think that's correct.
I think, I want to say 5 to 600.
Oh, is it? Okay.
Yeah.
There are pages growing up.
And we only service the one elementary campus for Navasota ISD.
Right. And that's High Point?
Yes, sir.
So, Commissioners, do you have any questions for Sergeant Smith?
And our portion of this is going to break down.
How's the budget? I mean, is the budget in my mouth?
The, I'm not sure, the attachment that you're looking at, this spreadsheet, that was back from May of 2021, the original. And so, that's, you can disregard that. It's in the budget currently with what has been talked about, Commissioner, with the $3. But that is super C good. I think that probably got placed in there by accident.
It does. He gave it, so everyone puts in their budget requests, and at that time, that was his request, and then things have changed since then. And so.
But the changes are in the proposed budget.
They are. Yes, sir.
Well, if there are no further questions, then I'd like to make the motion that we approve the SRO agreements between Grimes County and Iola ISD, Navasota ISD, and Anderson Shiro CISD, and authorize the county judge as signatory.
Second motion. There's a motion before the court on Agenda Item Number 12 by Commissioner Barbara Walker, seconded by Commissioner David Dobianski. Is there further discussion? Hearing on, all in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Aye. Opposed? That motion carries. Thank you.
Thank you.
Agenda Item Number 13, Emergency Management Services Coordinator David Lilly, consider and take action to approve the interlocal agreement for fire protection. Ma'am? Oh, I guess I did. All right. I'll come back. Please do, David. I'm sorry. And they never said anything about it?
Well, they were trying to get your attention.
Oh, were they? All right. I was heading down reading. We'll go back to Agenda Item Number Nine. Oh, I know I messed up, because I had my notes on 11 that I pulled up. There we go. All right. Agenda Item Number Nine, Grimes County Clerk Vanessa Brzezinski, consider and take action to adopt the county clerk's records archive plan for FY 2021, 2022. I'll see our attachment number nine. Thank you, Commissioner.
Good morning, Commissioners. I'm Vanessa Brzezinski. I'm the county clerk. So, before you, I have my records archive plan for fiscal year 2021, 2022. We did publish an ad in the paper, as required by statute, 15 days before this hearing. We did have a public hearing this morning. We had no public comments. So, I just want to go over my archive plan with you, and then we can discuss it. So, Local Government Code 118.025 permits the Commissioners Court of Accounting to adopt a records archive fee under Local Government Code 118.011, Section F, as part of the county's annual budget for the preservation and restoration services performed by the county clerk in connection with maintaining a county clerk's record archive. Section 118.025G requires an annual written plan for funding the preservation and restoration of the county clerk's records archive. HB 1513 was passed by the 83rd Legislature, and then it had set a fee of not more than $5 to not more than $10. The increased fee was set to revert to $5 in 2019, but in the 86 Texas Legislature, SB 658, made the permanent, made permanent the former temporary increases in records archive fees and records management and preservation fees for district and county clerks to $10. And that was effective on September 1st, 2019. So, the purpose of the county clerk's records have been, the county clerk's records have been exposed to deterioration from usage and unfavorable elements in some of the storage areas. Although the office is progressive in the preservation of current records by utilizing the records management fees collected, funding has not been sufficient to conserve all of the oldest records or to electronically preserve, restore, and reindex these records that have priceless historical value. In order to preserve and enhance the integrity and reliability of the existing system for recording and preserving public documents, the county clerk seeks to preserve existing original record books by restoration, digitization, reindexing of these records, and importantly, newly created images and data into the existing computer system. So, some of these methods include preserving old record books by removing mold, deacidifying pages, and placing them in new hardcover binders, modernize and upgrade old record systems in the office, continue to add records and information to the existing computer system, expedite record searching by having more records available for electronic retrieval, provide more public information via the Internet and other electronic methods, preserve original records by reducing daily manual usage, digitize existing records to eliminate or reduce manual lookups and searches, and eliminate the use of microfilm as a primary storage medium. lookups and searches, and eliminate the use of microfilm as a primary storage medium. So some of the proposed projects that I have, and I do want to make one correction, I forgot to change the year. It says fiscal year twenty twenty. It should say twenty-one, twenty-two. I apologize for that. So this is some of the projects that I hope to complete. I don't know if we'll get to all of them, but I wanted to include them in case we did. Scan index and restore old Commissioners Court Minutes books, scan index and restore old probate minute books, scan index and restore old marriage record books, scan index and restore other books as needed, scan index and digitize criminal, civil, and probate case files, organize and plan for record storage in the new facility, move deed record books from the main office into the storage facility in the old jail, develop a storage plan for older records housed in the old jail, purchase storage boxes and shelving for the new office building, and purchase storage boxes and shelving for the proposed new storage building.
Before you go any further, on Roman numeral four, we got one, two, three, four, five items that you're going to scan. Are those in your priority order, or have you just listed those?
Um, they're, in, in order as they've been done, like, we're working on Commissioners Court books now, but we're not done. We have not started probate minutes books, so that's my next project. And then most, so it's not necessarily in prioritized order. I just was grouping them as we, does that make sense?
I guess, I guess because, one, we're, that, you do collect a significant amount of money for that fund, and it's dedicated to your records, and I get that, and those records are under your control, and I get that. But I, I would ask that we get submitted from you a priority of what you're going to scan, because all the records you need to get done, you don't have enough money for.
Oh, absolutely.
So when the money runs low, or the money runs out, I'd like to know that we've scanned and preserved the most used records first.
Right.
And, you know, eventually, I guess we'll get all of them.
Right.
But because you do have limited resources to get it, I'd like to.
Yes, sir. And I agree completely, and so my, my priority right now is the probate records, because that is what we get the most requests for, for wills and those type of things. And like I said, we're almost done with Commissioners Court Minutes books, so that's not really, you know, that big of a deal. The probate books and then the.
Because the probate's a pretty big deal.
It is a very big deal, and that's going to probably take a good portion of that money for this year's budget anyways. But I wanted to go ahead and include everything.
Sure.
Just in case we do have the extra funding to do it. Okay? So most of the county clerk's records that are to be preserved are located in the Roden Bridge Building or the old jail on Highway ninety. These records include old deed record books, Commissioners Court Minutes books, old probate minute books, old marriage license books, old criminal, civil, and probate case files, and numerous other miscellaneous books and records. All of the birth and death records are currently being stored and evolved in the county clerk's main office. The more current marriage license books, deed record books, cattle brand books, and county court records are also being stored in the county clerk's main office in Anderson, which will be moved to the New Justice and Business Center once the new building is completed. The length of the project, due to the enormous volume of records in the Grimes County Clerk's office, the record archive projects will be an ongoing process for many years to come. So in summary, the legislature has provided a means to raise the revenue for the records management and preservation of older county records. The records archive fee is an alternative to raising taxes or spending general fund monies in to accomplish these projects. This plan will be implemented in phases as money is accrued, and all contract services will be done through standard purchasing procedures. Approval and implementation of the plan will ensure the preservation of priceless historical records for future generations. So do we have any questions? Also have, I've included the order to adopt the records archive plan. If you want me to read it, I will. If you have any questions.
Well, you answered my question in regards to, do you want to getting things done?
Yes, sir.
I know there was, there is a concern on the probate records because they're used so frequently and so often.
Yes, sir. And like I said, again, that is going to be my priority for this budget.
All right. I'm going to adopt the county clerk's records archive plan for fiscal year twenty twenty-one through twenty twenty-two. Second motion. There's a motion before the court on Agenda Item Number Nine by Commissioner Chad Mout, seconded by Commissioner David Dobianski. Is there further discussion? Hearing none, all in favor, say aye. Aye, opposed? Motion carries. Thank you, ma'am.
Thank you, Commissioner.
Now standing in order, Grimes County District Clerk Diane LaFleur, Number Ten, consider and take action to approve the district clerk's proposed annual written plan for preservation and restoration of the district court records archive pursuant to Texas Local Government Code fifty-one point three oh-five. Good morning.
Good morning. And as he said, I am Diane LaFleur, your district clerk, and I am going to try to not repeat everything that Vanessa said, because we're pretty much the same story, except I don't have the records, that part that she has. But I am submitting to you, the yearly district clerk archive fee plan is required by Government Code fifty-one point three oh-five B. The plan is for twenty twenty-one, twenty twenty-two, and we will continue to collect the ten dollar archive fee. And I just want to kind of, for the audience, explain that that ten dollars, every time a case is filed in our court, you pay ten dollars as part of your payment, and that's the ten dollars that we're talking about. So it comes from you who file cases. So anyway, let me just say, the goal for the district clerk is to reproduce and archive all documents regardless of type as efficiently as possible. The district clerk's office is also looking at restoring records, suspending or reducing deterioration of public records, improving the public access to these documents in a manner that reduces the risk of re, deteriorating and possible reducing and eliminating paper documents, which someday, we will be paperless. We've talked about it and talked about it, and I'll just say that, talking to my district judges, I have five judges that we work with, and they still like the paper.
They're both.
They want to touch it. Yes. And the scope, the scope of the document includes the following, all district clerk records filed with our office, plans to restore and preserve records with significant historical value, future plans are to improve public and governmental access, which I feel like we've done pretty well. You can access a lot of it online, and you can come in our office, use our terminals, or we can help you if you have trouble getting it. As for this year's project, we're planning to begin with our civil records from nineteen ninety-three to two thousand and twelve. We don't have a whole lot of money in that fund, but fifteen thousand of it is set aside for this year for me to begin to do some back scanning. And I have this order for you to sign. This will be the original. I know I emailed y'all a copy, but this I'll send around for y'all to sign. It's exactly what you signed last year. Nothing's changed, and it doesn't include the monies because we don't include that in the order that you signed, but it is in the budget for the fifteen thousand. And I have a quote, I don't know if I need to go through all this, but I do have a quote from CO File, and not to scare you, but it's around four hundred thousand to get all that I need done. So as Vanessa says, it's, it's a long process, and hopefully, we can get some help to, to get it done as quickly as we can. Let's see, what else?
I have invited the district clerk to our ARPA workshop and possibly express some concerns and need at that workshop, and then as we discuss spending, funding of those monies, it would be something we could consider, whether it falls within the guidelines of Treasury or not.
So I'll be back. Any questions?
Can you tell me what House Bill has now outlined that you don't have to do this this year?
I don't have it, because it doesn't start yet. That's why I have to do it this year.
Could you email it to me?
I sure will. I'd be glad to, be glad to. But I'm, at this point, acting like it doesn't exist yet, so.
But you said fifteen thousand is currently in the twenty twenty-two budget for archiving your civil history?
Yes, ma'am. Yes. Most of my criminal are already done, so it's, it's just going to be the civil right now, which includes divorce, family, any other subject. And if you need a divorce, you can go online and get it probably back to at least two thousand and twelve and further if you.
The divorce record?
Yes.
Now, if you need a divorce remisher, just go online.
What did I say? Get the divorce? Okay. Well, we have a lot of that, unfortunately. Okay. Trip on that.
Court. No, of course, can I make the motion that we approve these court proposed annual written plan for the preservation and the restoration of the district court records archive pursuant to Texas Local Government Code by one point three zero.
Seconded by Commissioner Philip Cox, is there further discussion? Hearing none, all in favor, say aye. Aye, opposed? That motion carries. Thank you very much.
Thank you.
All right. We've already covered Agenda Item Number Eleven. Let me get this, pass it on. All right, David, you've been on standby. Emergency Management Services Coordinator David Lilly, I'll repeat, Agenda Item Number Thirteen, consider and take action to approve the interlocal agreement for fire protection services between the city of Navasota and Grimes County. Attachment number thirteen.
Yes, Judge and Commissioners, Commissioner Walker gave me a copy of this proposed contract with the city of Navasota Fire Department and asked me to review it. I have, there's only one item on here that caught my attention, and if you will move to paragraph F, let's see, I think it's paragraph three F. It's referring to hazardous material incidents, and at the bottom, the last sentence says, "The county or other responsible party shall be solely responsible for paying for any cleanup costs associated with a hazardous material alarm in the service area, and the city shall have no financial responsibility for any such cleanup costs." I understand the purpose of this clause is to ensure that the city is held harmless when they respond, just like they would for a fire, you know, they're not responsible for any costs associated with that. My concern is, and I don't know if this has ever been an issue before, to be honest, I've never copped this before. I think this has been a standing part of our contract with them for some time, but it says, "The county shall be responsible or other responsible party." In practice, when we have a hazardous material incident, and the most common one we usually run into is where a carrier, a truck, has a spill, and the owner-operator of the truck is responsible for paying for the cleanup costs. And I believe that's covered by the phrasing "other responsible party." It's just, that kind of stood out to me, that I'm concerned that there could ever possibly be a situation where the county would be held responsible for any costs associated with a spill that we haven't been responsible for.
I have confidence with our legal services that we have in the county, we would never have to pay for that. It would be put on that owner-operator. Am I right, Mr. Folds?
You bet. That would be the intention. This is, Navasota's intent to be sure that they don't have, they're not report, but obviously, we would pursue it. This is the, to my knowledge, it's the same form we've used for the recent years.
Yeah, correct. Outside of that, I don't see any issues with this. Commissioner, do you have any findings or concerns with this contract?
That's a good review.
Do you know if we've had any incidents where we've had this situation happen?
No. In fact, I get called out whenever there is a hazardous material incident within the county to ensure that the report is generated to TCEQ and whoever else we're supposed to have the incident reported to. And again, I'm not aware of any situations where, even in those where I worked alongside the city of Navasota, when they came out and provided assistance, where the county ever received any kind of notice of payment or anything like that, it was always directed back to the owner-operator, whoever was responsible for the accident.
Is there no other questions? Then make a motion to approve the interlocal agreement for fire protection services between the city of Navasota and Grimes County.
There's a motion before the court on Agenda Item Number Thirteen by Commissioner Philip Cox, seconded by Commissioner Barbara Walker. Is there further discussion? And hearing none, all in favor, say aye. Aye, opposed? That motion carries. Thank you, Mr. Lilly.
Thank you.
Yes, I'd like to.
We'll go to Agenda Item Number Fourteen, Grimes County Building Maintenance Manager Al Peeler, fourteen, consideration and possible approval of award of moving services contract. Mr. Peeler.
Good morning, Commissioners and Judge.
Good morning.
Well, we went out for bid for moving. We sent twenty-plus emails out to the surrounding area, from College Station, Conroe, Huntsville, to all the moving companies that we could find. We got two bids, and they're all from Houston. I don't know. So what I bring before you is a recommendation that we go with Wald Relocation Services LTD. And let me tell you how we get to this number.
What services do you get?
Wald Relocation Services. It's in your package right.
Did you bring that your hand out that you gave us this morning?
Yeah, it's right there. So as you can see, there was some difference in the bids. One was forty-eight thousand, six hundred and forty-three dollars and seventy-eight cents, and then the other one was seventy-nine thousand, one seventy-nine. On pre-bid conference day, we took them through every office that was being moved, and I said, "Give me worst-case scenario as the whole office is being moved." So that's what you're seeing in, in the bid. Total not to exceed. Wald didn't put that on there. We have confirmed that the forty-eight thousand is the total not to exceed. The addendum for county clerk was the addendum for the files down in the old jail. We didn't know what she's moving out of there, what she's moving in, so we placed an addendum on there. Wald is, Wald, I think the difference between the bid is, and I could be wrong, but Wald is a time and material bid. The other Roadrunner gave us a heart, this is what it's going to be for us to move. So I believe, and I'm not promising this, I believe that that will come down, because they walked into some offices that we're not even moving desk or whatever. They won't move that. They'll move, they'll come in, they'll get the little things that they got. Well, the time and material is less than what they bid. So we could be south of that number.
When you say south, you're talking about the forty-eight thousand?
Yes.
Okay.
So we're still on the wild.
Wald, yeah. I, I, that's my recommendation.
Al, I have a question. Okay, so this addendum, is that in addition to the forty-eight thousand?
Yes, that's what I meant, yes.
Because there's not a lot that's going to be coming out.
Okay, so, well, then we just, we wouldn't use the addendum.
Right.
The addendum has to be on there in case you decide to say, "Oh, we want the whole thing."
Oh, no.
If that's the case, then it's going to cost us eighty-seven hundred dollars. Well, if that's the case, then it's going to cost us eighty-seven hundred dollars more.
So, I would say ninety percent of that's going to stay over there.
So, the forty, I'm sorry, the forty-eight thousand, does include some moving of her records that are in her office?
Mm-hmm. Yeah, no. That, the only, the addendum is only if we had to move all of that building. This is worst-case scenario. I wanted to make sure we had worst-case scenario on our bids. Then we, then when we, that's why they're told not to exceed. We're not going any higher. I made that perfectly clear in our pre-bid meeting. We're not going any higher on what you bid. That's it. So, what it is today that I'm asking for is you guys give me authorization to continue on with getting a contract so I can send it to John C., and then I'll bring the contract back, but I need authorization to proceed with the bid winner.
Is there anybody else over in the old jail that we need to have the addendum on?
No.
Is there anybody else?
I have stuff there, but it may not be going anywhere yet.
Right. And I need that.
Okay.
So, Al, I noticed on this proposal here, it missed packing of non-personal items. We've had that discussion.
Absolutely.
In the court.
Yes, sir.
Prior to this, it would be an additional charge to the county if this company had to pack up personal items.
Yes.
That are in offices.
Yes.
So, will those offices be notified in advance of?
Yes, sir. As soon as, as soon as I get this, who's going to move us, I do the, I can do two things. I can get the contract to John C., work with who I'm, we're going to use moving, and then I will set the standards of what they will consider a personal item and what the county considers a personal item, and then we'll put that in an email and have them move their personal items out before we start moving.
But this is non-personal items? What is the definition of non-personal items?
Non-personal item?
It is packing of non-personal?
It's like.
Supply house?
Desk computer?
Yeah, it, yeah. It's.
County property.
County property.
So, we're just speaking as a person item?
Yes.
We want a letter sent out to everybody?
Yes, we, well, I don't know if we have to do a letter, but we have discussed the fact of it costs additional money for them to back, package and box up, for instance, photographs on the wall, painting pictures on the wall, plants, whatever. All of that, I don't think we need to pay for.
I was just trying to make sure. I didn't see that in here, but I just wanted to make sure what you're talking about, non-personal.
Right. So, the other cost that I wasn't aware of, and it was brought up on pre-conference day, and then Greg Cannon, our IT Director, took, we got him involved, the, they will not move our copiers because they are under maintenance agreements.
Correct.
And if we move the copiers, that nullifies the copier's maintenance agreement, and he got a cost of a hundred and twenty-five dollars per copier. That, we have twenty-seven copiers. That will be three thousand, three hundred and seventy-five dollars extra on the moving cost.
And that will, that will come from the owners of the copying machines, is that correct? I mean, where, who's going to move them for that price?
UVO, UVO.
UVO.
Yes, sir.
And non-UVO?
They're all UVO now.
They're, everything's UVO.
Over here is?
Yes.
Even their personals?
Uh, they're.
There are no personals?
There's no personal copies. There's personal prayers.
Okay, yes.
But the personal printers are owned by the county.
Correct.
So, we'll, so Greg has talked with the moving company. They will disconnect, the office will disconnect all computers, stuff that IT deals, and they'll pack it out, and then they'll put it back, and then IT will hook it back up.
And this, this company, Wald, is, you betted their insurance and recommendations?
Yes. I've called about five or six of their, references. All I can say is recommendations. Let me all know I get tongue-tied up here, I just.
I'll move to allow the maintenance department to go into negotiations and construction of a contract with Wald Relocation Services LTD. There's a motion before the Court on Agenda Item Number Fourteen by Commissioner Chad Mallett, seconded by Commissioner Philip Cox. Is there further discussion? Hearing none, all in favor, say aye. Aye opposed? That motion carries. Thank you, Mr. Peeler.
Thank you.
We'll go to Agenda Item Number Fifteen, Grimes County Elections Administrator Lucy Barra.
Good morning.
Item Fifteen, Consider and Take Action to Approve the Proclamation and Resolution Marking the Week of September twenty-one, twenty, excuse me, twenty-one through September twenty-eight, twenty-twenty-one as National Voter Registration Week in Grimes County and authorize the county judge's signatory CR attachment number fifteen.
Good job, Judge.
Got choked up.
It's a lot, but. Okay, guys, so I've just got a couple of things that I want to hand out to you guys that we're not including in your attachment. It just gives you a little bit of a background so you have a better understanding of what we're going to be talking about. Yeah, this is Court Judge Johnson's. Okay. Sorry about that. I'll give you a second. Okay, so, and thank you very much. As a sudden, I'm Ms. Lucy. In the past, we normally celebrate National Voter Registration Day with just making sure that we have extended office hours with the county and making sure that we're available to the public. This serves as a day where we want to gather and process as many new or updated voter registration information documents as we can. What we wanted to do, and this is something I've talked to you guys about before during budget season, is we want to make this a bigger event every year. So, of course, last year was COVID. We could not do that. So, this year, we're going to try to stretch it a little bit more, and next year, it's going to be a little bit bigger. So, what we would like to do this year, and what your proclamation explains, is that we would like to stretch this into a week-long event. The data that you have that I've just handed out is based on 2019 census numbers because, of course, right now, that's kind of what we're working with. But basically, it gives you an idea of where we are at population-wise. So, we're a little bit over twenty-nine thousand in Grimes County. Voter registration-wise, which is your second piece of paper, that breaks down your age group, so your demographics, based on age for voter registration, based on voting precincts. For you guys that are elected officials, this is always good data. It's always good for y'all to use. But what's good for us is it kind of tells us where we need to focus our outreach, what we need to focus our base, our biggest amount of marketing for. It's just also good for us to know. So, right now, we are a little over eighteen thousand in voter registration population. So, that's about a sixty-one percent of what we have in Grimes County. That's a good number, y'all. That's a really good number. The goal that we set for our office within the next two years is to bring us up to a twenty thousand voter registration population, which we anticipate would be about a sixty-four percent growth in voter registration because of census data, what we're anticipating for census is anywhere from thirty-one thousand to thirty-three thousand in population in Grimes County. That's, that's a lot of numbers. I'm going to expect all of y'all to remember it. But, so what we'd like to do is every year, we're going to use a voter registration, National Voter Registration Week, to increase our voter population. You guys following me so far? It's a lot. But what we'd like to do this year, this will be the first time that we stretch it from a day to an entire week-long program. We will have four locations that will be available in the county, so of course, the courthouse will always be a place for voters to come and register with us, and we'll follow, you know, our normal office hours. But we'll also have a location in the north side of our county, which is Bedice. We'll have a location in Navasota at Berkshire Brothers. They are actually working with us and going to actually use some of their staff to help push, push out our voter registration information, which is the first time we've ever partnered with an actual business to do something like this. And then we are, we are also working with the City of Todd Mission to help with our south side of the county. We'll have four days of this. So, basically, our locations that are outside of the courthouse, so outside of county offices, will be, will have staff from twelve o'clock noon to seven PM to serve anybody that has lunch breaks, as well as anybody after hours. We'll have them set up with volunteer deputy voter registrars, so these are people who can actually register and accept those voter registrations. They will have my iPads checked out from the office, which will have a voter registration list loaded on them. So, when you guys go and vote, you check in with your ID, and that pulls up your voter registration data. We're going to do the same process with our iPads, so that way we can check actively right there. If Commissioner Mallett walks up and he changes his address and he forgot to tell us, don't do that. But he forgot to tell us, we can check it right there, get him a form, and get it done. So, it's real-time data, and it's a real-time way for us to process this. It's fast food, but it works really well because the voter can see it, the voter can get it done, and we can get that in before the November election. And we will be doing this from September twenty-first to September twenty-eighth, from Tuesday to Tuesday, and, excuse me, and those four locations will be open at, on random days during that week, so that way people have some options if they can't make just the one day. Any questions on that?
You doing this with volunteers?
Yes, sir. We are going to be doing it with volunteer deputy voter registrars. We do have some costs to this, which we have set aside some money for that we have through Chapter Nineteen funds and through my Elections Administration funds. So, there will be some staffing costs because we will need to have some staff in the office just in case for extended time. But any of the stickers that I have for you guys, the, that we'll have for the public, the posters that we have, those were all given to us kind of like a grant, so not a real grant, Jesse, don't worry. So, not a real grant, but they were donated to us through the National Voter Registration Organization. I apply with them every year to get whatever, either free swag, like the stickers or the posters, so it's no cost to us every year. And they also blast, they will start blasting our, our stuff on their website as well. So, here's what I need, y'all. Now, you have this nice presentation. So, a couple of things I need. We are going to be posting on the county Facebook page all the locations, what's going to be happening, that kind of thing. If you guys have Facebook pages that your, your constituents, your community follows, we need y'all to share those. We also would like for you guys to wear our stickers. Say, hey, I'm a voter of Grimes County. This is where you can go if you want to become a voter. We need y'all to help us push this because I need free advertisement, and this, this is where I need y'all. Okay? Any questions?
If there are no questions, then I'd like to make the motion to approve the Proclamation and Resolution Marking the Week of September twenty-first, twenty-one through September twenty-eighth, twenty-one as National Voter Registration Week in Grimes County and authorize the county judge's signatory.
There's a motion on Agenda Item Number Fifteen by Commissioner Barbara Walker, seconded by Commissioner Philip Cox. Is there further discussion?
I would just like, thank Lucy for the information you gave us. That's valuable.
I was all, did you say, or did I miss, are you going to hold a voters' registration workshop for your deputies?
Yes, we've been actively doing that for the last two months. So, I have enough staff, and we're ready to go now.
Okay.
Yeah.
Because not everybody is allowed by law to.
Correct.
I mean, I can give you a card, but you can't fill it out, and I can't take that card back from you unless I'm an authorized deputy to do so. So, we just don't want any confusion out in the, in the community.
We maintain anywhere from ten to twenty DVRs or VDRs in, in our county, and I follow.
DVR stand for?
Yeah, Deputy Voter Registration.
Thank you.
Not your actual DVR at home. But we, I maintain and follow up with them every two years to make sure they're recertified, and they are both parties, both Democratic and Republican parties, to make sure we have equal representation. You know, it's a big thing with me, so.
All right. And just Commissioners, be aware, if somebody hands you a card, give it right back to them, you cannot accept that, okay?
Will the deadlines on voter registration change any because of the census?
Not for this election. Of course, all dates are up for discussion for next, you know, the spring, things like that, which I will be coming to you guys to make sure the public knows when our election dates are going to be, once those are actually finalized and released. Right now, we have, you know, of course, a special session with the census and redistricting that's going on or happening, so.
Is there any further discussion? Agenda Item Number Fifteen, all in favor, say aye. Aye opposed? Motion carries.
Thank you.
Thank you, ma'am.
We'll leave these guys.
We'll go to Agenda Item Number Sixteen, Grimes County 911 Environmental Coordinator Kat Lee. Consideration of Possible Approval of Award of Solid Waste Disposal Services Contract to be effective October one, twenty-twenty-one and authorize the county judge's signatory CR attachment number sixteen. Good morning, Ms. Lee.
Good morning. So, um, my name's Kat Lee. Over the solid waste department for Grimes County, we've come to the end of our contract with our, at the end of September. We went out for bid for our solid waste hauling contract. You've got my letter of recommendation on awarding that contract to the Brandon Industrial Group, our BVR. Reasons for that, if you've been out to our sites, and I know several of you have gotten calls, we've had a lot of breakdowns over the last several years that have taken a significant amount of time to get fixed. Those times that we're down, we have to close our sites periodically, which is not fair to our citizens that load their trash up in their car and come to dispose their trash properly, only to be told, no, you got to take it back home, you have to take it to a different site, and it's not fair to them. They do not like, they get very outraged with that when we have to close abruptly because things break down. Case in point, I think Commissioner Dobieski got some phone calls several months, a couple of months ago. We were down at our showroom site for well over a month, and we had to have a roll-off container brought in, which our citizens have no, you know, they're a lot, some are elderly, some are height-challenged, and you have to throw the bag over the top of that big roll-off container. Very inconvenient, took a long time to get it fixed. We also have, we had some issue with having our containers changed out. We're supposed to be on a set schedule when we're, and change them out when we're not open. We've had them come while we're open, and we had to close our site. It takes about forty-five minutes for them to change out our, our containers, and that's time that I have citizens sitting in their cars or they leave, and I hope that they come back and not throw their trash out on the side of the road as, you know, frustration. So, this is a little background on what I'm dealing with here. That being said, the numbers that you see in front of you, those are numbers that Lisa and I have worked up on historical data from our tonnage that we've had in the past, how many pulls that we have, how many times the containers are changed out per week, per month, and that's how we came up with the number that you see there at the bottom in
And again, just for the record, what you had previously submitted in your budget was around ninety thousand, and after we got the bids, then we had to come up to what was about a hundred and twenty-eight thousand, something like that?
Hundred and twenty-eight.
Hundred and twenty-eight, real. Okay. And that was one of the adjustments, Commissioners, that we talked about when Jesse was providing us the information, so, just as a reminder.
And then to speak to that, this is a service that we provide to our citizens, and while it may be an increase, we are going to be able to provide to them additional services that we may not have been having, and because of the lack of response we were getting from our current provider, this created havoc not only for our workers, but for those citizens that bring their trash and then have to turn around and go back home with their trash, and then we're later picking up. and then we're later picking it up on the roadside. It's just a, a service that we can improve upon for our citizens. It's been tough dealing with this for our staff, dealing with this, having to do the maintenance themselves. That should never have been. Even with the low cost of the monthly rental, they were doing the maintenance, which cost time and effort also from what they could be doing. They have other jobs that they do also. Her right-hand man is out there all the time fixing these machines that we are not getting the proper response from, that we would like from the waste service that provides it now. So we are looking for her recommendation, although it's not the lowest bid. It is a service that we are going to improve upon for our citizens. And they won't run into this issue. Also, for the people that maintain the, that manage the stations, this is going to be a relief for them, you know. And, and like you said, a lot of our citizens are elderly people that have to take their trash. First of all, have to take, we don't have city services. This is a rural, unincorporated areas that are having to take their services. They're having to take their bags to these dump sites and put them in themselves. So this is going to be a, an improvement, we hope, to what we have now. And it's been very frustrating. I just want to talk, it's overwhelming for her. It's frustrating.
It is. It's very frustrating when you have to make three, four, and five phone calls and not get a response back.
And we did not receive a response until yesterday.
Yeah, I had a question about our current provider's bid and started calling on Friday and didn't get a phone call back till late this afternoon. So that's just kind of what we deal with on a continuing basis.
I, I do have, I did have a question just because I don't have the contract in front of me. I guess the contract we are, I did ask, is this a five-year? I think I heard that from the auditor.
Yes.
Give us a five-year contract?
Contract that we have currently?
Can you make sure our county attorney, people like Kat, he can have mine, you know?
Should be a three-year contract.
Is it a three-year?
Yeah.
They are here, aren't they?
Yes, yes, we have representatives from big here too.
The ability to renew for two additional years?
Will there be any stoppage and collection, change it out, the equipment and all?
No, I've spoken with our representatives and they will bring us open tops to use until our current provider takes away their equipment and then they'll install their.
Do you have any idea, once we give our current provider notice, how long will it take them to remove theirs?
We had a, where we closed, do you remember, we closed the Keith site? And they came out within a week and got their container, their compactors. And you'll also notice, if you look, the rental fee, these are brand-new compactors that they will be delivering to our sites. And they do have regular maintenance that come out and, and do regular maintenance on their compactors. And that was one of my questions that I have for our current provider, and they let me know, no, they don't do regular maintenance.
I'm looking for that timeline. It's, it's not filled in, so. I'm looking for the time, term.
Yeah, we didn't fill that in just in case something got tabled or things like.
On the last page, 2021, November 21. The initial term of the agreement shall be for a period of three years, beginning October 1, 2021, and expiring September 30, 2024. On October 1, 2024, this agreement shall automatically renew. John C. Foltz's favorite word. Will automatically renew and extend in full force and effect for a term of two years, unless either party gives written notice by the registered mail within 60 days prior to the termination date. Maximum term of this agreement will not be more than five years.
Ask each of the representative. Is there, although this is for a period of three years and automatically renew for another two, and I realize this is new equipment we're receiving, is there room for negotiation at some point on the rates?
I'll say yes, you know, at the, at the end of the first three years, we could bring that back to the table and see what, what we need to do there. I'm Chad Leckler, I'm the G.M. of BVR Wasterecycling for Brandon Industrial Group. We're located in College Station, have a recycling facility there and do a lot of the trash service in the area.
You want to introduce yourself, please?
I'm Chris Cale, Corporate Safety.
And in all fairness and for complete transparency, Commissioner Walker and myself have been out to their facility and toured their facility. You weren't there?
I didn't get to hear.
You were there, weren't you? Oh, that's you?
I was in by it and I had a conflict at that time.
All right, you stood us up. Kat was there. Okay, I'm giving you credit, sorry.
I just have one question. This, so this, this price is good for three years?
Yes, sir.
And Chris, you are from Grimes County, I want to say that, and you're our neighbor Brandon. This is, this is a contract from, that we populated?
It's our con, it's the contract that we had prior. The only major big change that was in there was we had a 48-hour turnaround if we had a problem, for them to come in and have a solution. And I shortened that to 24 hours because we are open to the public. And I felt like 48 hours was a little bit too long to, for something to be addressed.
And that's, that's pretty standard in our, with our company, is a 24-hour turnaround. Matches up.
Do you operate in Grimes County?
Yes, ma'am.
Are, I'm in a, in an unincorporated area, and I do know that you pick up at my home.
Yes, ma'am.
So do other citizens outside of my subdivision have an opportunity to have door-to-door service?
Yes, ma'am. We're, uh... They provide me. They provide me.
We have, pretty much anywhere in Grimes County, we provide rural trash pickup services as well.
Tuesday morning before 10:00 a.m.?
And this is a revenue-generating service? We also have?
Four, five, five of the sites. They are, they do have a revenue. The sixth site, that will be for county. So that, that sixth site will be over at the jail. We spoke with Al Peeler, and we will be doing away with the smaller containers here. And we'll have a compactor there that will be for the Justice Center, the courthouse, any annexes here in town, and the jail.
So those monies that we were spending on those services were now we rolled over into this service? All, all under one charter, right?
So it's all under one contract, yes, ma'am. That's correct.
And I know we have additional sites, and I think I mentioned at least to Al that we can still have NavSoda Annex, and we have one behind the hospital. And so I don't think those were included, so I want to give you a heads up that that money was moved over into Al Peeler's budget for this upcoming year. So I guess we'll continue with those services there because they did not include the NavSoda Annex in this bid.
Al's in the doorway. Al, did you hear that?
I, I missed it, sorry. I heard Al Peeler's budget back then.
The money for trash collection over at the NavSoda Annex and, and the dumpster behind the hospital has now been moved to your budget. And if not, we need to check on that because these did not include the dumpsters we have currently at the NavSoda Annex.
I'll check on that. We did not, we moved the money from your budget to Al's. We have not touched it.
Okay, well, that's what I wanted to let you know. That's fine if you want to remain with the services that you have.
Right.
Because the money is in Al's budget now, it's in your.
Right, and we have not reduced his budget. We moved straight from yours into his.
So, in your bid, that wasn't in the bid, the NavSoda? Okay.
That we talked about.
Yeah, right. Okay. I'm okay, half a dozen other. I mean, whether it comes out of my budget and I have to go and find who does it, or I go through Kat and she can group me with the people she's using, I'm, I'm okay with that. Whatever's easier for the court.
You, you go to the auditors because that was something that came out of my budget. So Catherine just assisted with time, time to connect with them, but she does have connection.
Absolutely. So, I mean, we can work whatever that is out. I'm, I'm okay, me and Kat work together and we, we can figure that out.
I just want to make court aware, you still had a location that was not included in these.
So the money potentially could be pulled out of Al's budget, put on Kat's contract, and we're done with it. We've got one provider.
Or you can leave it currently by giving...
Understood, understood.
Whatever, whatever, whatever makes it easier for the court and auditors, and Kat.
It's not a big thing, but I just want you all to be aware of where they are, of the locations.
Absolutely. Don't give me heart failure like that.
With all of that, is there a... Motion?
I'm going to make a motion that we approve the award of the solid waste disposal services contract to be effective October 1, 2021, and authorized county judge is signatory.
Second. We have a motion before the court by Commissioner Walker, Barbara Walker, seconded by Commissioner David Dobianski. I do have a question. Is your motion contingent upon the review by John C. Foltz? Or which Foltz, have you reviewed the contract?
I've seen it before. I think this says, Kat indicated this is a contract that was used before. If you're not comfortable with the automatic renewal, you could make a sort of, you could propose to modify that portion of the contract. Also, you have the issue, though, do you modify this contract to include those that Commissioner Walker talked about? You can do that after the approval of this contract, but you bring in the issue of bids, went out for bids on this thing, and now you're potentially changing the deal. There is a provision to modify the contract. We can talk about that if you all decide to approve this contract.
And I would recommend that we just stay where we are at this particular time with the services that we have at the NavSoda Annex and behind the hospital. So I, I didn't see any change to my motion.
So we have a motion before the court on agenda item number 16, again, by Commissioner Barbara Walker, seconded by Commissioner David Dobianski. And any further discussion? Hearing none, all in favor, say aye. Aye, oppose? That motion carries. Thank you.
Thank you.
Agenda item 17, Grimes County Historical Commission Chairman Mary Ann Waters. Consider and take action to approve the award of the demolition agreement for the building located in the historical Anderson Park, and authorized county judge is signatory, and authorized Grimes County auditors prepare a budget amendment for fiscal year 2021 for cost of demolition. See attachment number 17.
Good morning. My name is Mary Ann Waters, I'm chairman of the Grimes County Historical Commission. Before you, a contract was sent out to you prior to this. It's the same contract. The only difference is his name was not accurately placed on the contract, so I just marked one line through it and corrected his name. He has signed it. We are going to demolish the building that's next, that's in the park, that's next to the general store. It is in very poor condition and it needs to come down. There's, it would cost too much to restore it back, so we just want to take it down. That's what this contract is for. Contract amount we have is for $10,500, and the contractor will supply us with general mobility insurance.
County attorney, approve this.
Yes.
We, we participated in the drafting. I, I doesn't, I don't believe there's a term included, but I would just suggest to the Historical Commission that Mr. Peeler be present when it's being, when it's initiated because it's right next to another building and I want to be sure that there's no question about which building is coming down. All I have is a video that's attached. It shows that, and it circles the building with these two buildings tied.
Yeah, they're like this far apart.
And so we do have the authority, and this is, it's not salvageable?
Yes, the building is not.
Mr. Peeler has indicated to us that it's not. And that reminded, this is an asset of the county's that the Historical Commission has oversight of, but they're essentially a branch or an arm of county government. And so they're asking for your consent to do this, but it's, it's at their request. And Mr. Peeler, when he was the chair or president or whatever his title was previously, he indicated it needed to happen.
So if it's an asset of Grimes County, I'm just checking, is it an asset? It's, it's still an arm, although it's an arm, it's an asset of Grimes County. I want to make sure that we are following the statute of demolition of...
Yes, ma'am.
A salvageable...
Yes, ma'am. I'm not sure anybody wants, will want the material that's taken down from the demolition. You potentially could auction off nails and half of boards and...
Big real row of nails.
The question is, is it trash? Is it debris, or is, is it something you want to auction?
Well, we, even, we had a workshop at Work Day, and we did try to salvage some of the wood out of it, but it's so old and dry and there's holes in the ceiling, it's been wet in there, and it just splinters. It just comes out in pieces. You can't even get a long piece of board out of there.
I have no doubt, but I just was asking because we've had to ask before about destroying property.
And in this contract, it also, it includes the, for them to demolish it and to haul off all the debris. They will clean it back up to ground level where there won't be anything left there when they finish.
We've had 30 days.
And if we get this approved today, they hope to start tomorrow or Friday on it, so.
I'll make a motion on agenda item number 17 to approve the award of the demolition agreement as presented. Second. There's a motion before the court on agenda item number 17, our county judge Joe Fowles, seconded by Commissioner David Dobianski. Is there further discussion? Hearing none, all in favor, say aye. Aye, oppose? That motion carries. We'll go to, thank you.
Thank you. I'll bring you the original to sign later.
Okay, ma'am. Agenda item number 18, considering possible action to accept roads in King Oaks Section 4 ungated into Grimes County road maintenance system and release the road security bond associated with them therewith. See attachment number 18.
Good morning, everyone. On Estes out, I found out Bublie first with the King of Trumpios owners association is with us today. And keep an eye on him because he flew me at about 2:00 o'clock last night to look here for his meeting. I might not offer him a certification. As you may recall, the county subdivision rules require, were changed in recent years to require that... to require that we have 50% development of the properties on a subdivision with asphalt roads before it can be accepted for county maintenance. King Oaks Section 4 is the ungated portion of King Oaks Section 4. King Oaks Section 4 also includes the private road section. Today's action is only the public road portion. They have met that 50% build-out criteria. We have inspected the roads and they have gone through and performed a reseal on these roads. Third course chip seal on these roads with the contractor that the property association has retained. I was there while they were doing that work, inspected the work. They did a really good job. So, we are recommending at this point in time that the county accept King Oaks Section 4 public roads, which includes Hampton Court north of the Waterwell site, Hampton Circle, Albert Drive, Bedford Court, and of course, Lancaster Drive north of Cambridge Drive into the county's maintenance system, and also release their road security bond at this time. Any questions? Everything that shows on the flat I put there, it's Hampton Court, the portion of Hampton Court north of the Waterwell site, Hampton Circle, Albert Drive, Bedford Court, and Lancaster Drive north of Cambridge Drive. Lancaster is the one on the right edge, where the heavy dash line splits that. This is a three-page flat. Only provided the front page includes these roads.
I move to accept the roads in King Oaks Section 4 that are ungated into Grimes County Road Maintenance System and release the road security bond associated with... Second. There's a motion before the court on Agenda Item Number 18 by Commissioner Chad Mallett, seconded by Commissioner David Dobianski. Is there further discussion? Hearing none, all in favor say aye. Aye, opposed, that motion carries.
Thank you all, Rob.
Thank you.
Say later. Stay away.
Terry.
Agenda Item Number 19, consideration of possible acceptance of the dedication of non-standard turnaround at the end of CR 208 in Precinct 2. See Attachment Number 19.
If you will recall, we recently approved the abandonment of the last plus or minus 500 feet of County Road 208. At that time, we had also requested or made that abandonment contingent on working out a suitable turnaround at the end of the road with the property owners. Originally, we had proposed to put in a standard county turnaround, which would be a 60-foot diameter circular cul-de-sac. The property owners objected to that configuration because there are a number of very large pine trees and oak trees that would have to come down to build that, and they wanted to retain the trees. So, we've met with them and have come up with a plan for a Y-shaped turnaround. It's not our standard, but it would be a suitable turnaround to allow most traffic that got down there and came up to a gate to be able to back around conveniently and head back out. The current road does not have any kind of a turnaround at the end, so even though this is not our standard, it would be an improvement over what's out there now. There's a survey there that shows the configuration of the turnaround. It basically fits within the existing fenced right-of-way area of County Road 208 and provides for about a 50-foot section of road on each leg of the Y where you can pull in and back out and turn around. So, it'd be a three-point turn. I think this is suitable for this location. Obviously, it's three or four miles down the end of a dead-end road. There's not a lot of traffic that gets there by accident, so most people that get there aren't going to be turning around in any case. So, we think this would be suitable and are recommending that it be accepted, which would also complete the transaction to abandon the last part of County Road 208. Any questions?
Would it be able to accommodate a school bus if then the teacher probably is not fresh around right now? Would it be able to accommodate a school bus?
I believe that school bus would be able to turn around. They would have to be a little bit careful if it would be backed out or turned out. But I think there's enough length on each leg of the Y there that would allow them to do that. And of course, we'll, normally when we do this and the property owners dedicate a turnaround, road bridge will go in and put road material on to create a wider surface, so we'll make sure that there's adequate material there to compensate that.
We have a similar, I think, setup in Precinct 1. It's a three-point school bus turnaround.
Yeah, this is not the only location in the county where they have something like this. And quite frankly, a lot of our roads end without any kind of a turnaround. I think this is definitely an improvement over what we have right now.
I went out yesterday and looked at that survey, and it would be sufficient for a school bus to turn around there, depending on the drivers. Either former bus driver.
Neither good driver. It's not overly generous, but if you went and looked at the site, you saw the issues with the trees. I think it'd be hard to improve on it without having to take down some very large, you know, types of trees. I would point out that if approved, there would be a slight modification of the abandonment documents because the road limits changed slightly because of not getting the circular turnaround and the Y shape. We have those documents here for your, you know, taking care of.
If there are no further questions or comments, we accept the dedication of a non-standard turnaround at the end of County Road 208, Precinct 2. Second. There's a motion before the court on Agenda Item Number 19 by Commissioner David Dobianski, seconded by Commissioner Chad Mallett. Is there further discussion? Hearing none, all in favor say aye. Aye, opposed, that motion carries. We'll go to Agenda Item Number 20. Consideration of possible approval of special road use and indemnity agreement for RES System 3 on County Road 166, County Road 172, County Road 174, and County Road 175 in Precinct 1. See our Attachment Number 20.
The Agenda Item is the actual special road use agreement. Slightly less involved than the Agenda Item would include only County Road 166 and County Road 172 and Racy Road. There, the original application they submitted, they had a footnote on it basically that said those are the only roads that would be used for overweight loads, so we have no reason to issue a permit on the other roads. I would just assume not confuse the issue of Racy or Confirmant for overweight loads.
How do you spell Racy?
R-O-E-S-E. Basically, County Road 172 from Highway 244, which turns into Racy Road and goes to the very end. There, this is a power line replacement project. They will be using the heavy concrete poles for that construction, and so they end up going over our weight limit. It also extends across on the other side of Highway 244 on County Road 166. This one's also. And they have given me a timeline. They are hoping to have their project completed by the end of the calendar year.
Where would they be coming from on those heavy trucks? Would they even probably use that 174 to go off?
No, that's why I took those out of the permit, so we can make sure they're limited. They have to come in on Highway 244 and go directly to 172 or 166. They had originally, on their mapping and in the original application, they were including 174 and 175, and I don't want to give them the perception that they're allowed to use that. Particularly 174 would be a bad choice for those long trailers and those long poles.
There's still a lot of people, I guess, from the solar farm that use that, I guess, employees.
Yeah, we're still having cut-through issues for some of the other projects as well.
I move to approve a special road use indemnity agreement for RES Systems 3 for County Road 166 and County Road 172. And Racy Road.
166, 172, and Racy.
Second. There's a motion before the court on Agenda Item Number 20 by Commissioner Chad Mallett, seconded by Commissioner David Dobianski. Is there further discussion? Hearing none, all in favor say aye. Aye, opposed, that motion carries. Run bridge report, sir.
Happy to report we've completed all of the first course paving. We started on the second course. We got County Road 202 completed on the second course. And unfortunately, our luck with the weather man ran out. We had to postpone paving we had planned for yesterday. We are going to attempt to go back to paving tomorrow if it dries up a little bit this afternoon. However, at that schedule, we will probably have one or two of the areas that get pushed into the next fiscal year. If the weather stays warm and dry in October, we'll get those complete this fall. If not, we'll have to come back maybe and do one or two of those areas next spring.
I don't know what the weather forecast is for Friday, but do you have enough money in your budget to offer overtime to your paving crew?
We do. The paving operation is difficult to get enough people that will be willing to work on overtime on a Friday because it takes, you know, like all of one crew and half the other crew. It won't hurt us significantly. Normally, we're able to pave in October and those roads. Again, County Road 174 went all last year, went through the entire winter with only a single course on it. What would be left, if everything works and we are able to pave tomorrow, would be several small cul-de-sacs in Rolling Oak subdivision. So, I'm not overly concerned about that pushing beyond the end of the fiscal year. I have asked for people to work this Friday and every Friday for the rest of the year. I think it caught up on some of our other operations, and we'll continue to try and pave at least two days a week from here on out.
Anything else? Commissioner Dobianski has something that you wanted to share before you leave. Yes, Ms. Rogers is here from Rolling Oak this morning, president of the Homeowners Association, and she gave a thank you letter to the Road Bridge Department for the work that you all did out there. We do appreciate that, and she has something for you also.
We have one for you as well.
Thank you for...
Cherish that. That doesn't happen very often.
Believe me, we do, we get many more complaints than thank you.
Yeah.
And we're not going to forget you. We're going to come back and finish.
We want you to know we appreciate what you've done.
Thank you. It's nice to be appreciated. Beyond that, we're continuing to work on our grant projects. They're making good progress on the 2016 project. They got all the major cove work in down on County Road 206 and are ready to start putting rock down on that road. That's all coming along nicely. The other developers working in the county, or the other projects working in County Road 215, they've gotten all their stabilization done on that west of the, or east of the bridge, and they're working on the portion west of the bridge up to 1774 this week. And then hopefully, again, weather permitting, they'll start putting rock down on that next week. That project will probably live up over the end of the fiscal year, and that's our CTI-funded project that went through. So, things are going well. Like I said, we knew our luck and the weather was going to run out eventually. They finally caught up with us, but it really hasn't hurt us. It's just been a little too damp to be able to pave. Any other questions? Thank you.
We'll now go to Agenda Item Number 21, consider and take action to approve the sub-recipient agreement between Grimes County and Brazos Valley Area Agency on aging. Attachment Number 21. This is the FY 2122 agreement. Grimes County Government, I'm not going to read the whole document because you've had this for a period of time, but there and after referred to as sub-recipient and Brazos Valley Area Agency on aging. BBAAA do hereby agree to provide services effectively beginning October 1, 2021 in accordance with the older Americans Act of 1965 OAA as amended Health and Human Services Commission, HHSC, and BBAA. Sounds like a country song, doesn't it? Direct purchase of services programs and stated scope of services. Are there any particular questions? This is with the meals that we help provide on that.
Meal delivery?
They do the home deliveries because some people choose to come and pick theirs up, and those that aren't able to come and pick theirs up choose the home delivery, but it's a program that... Well, for our elderly, it's a good deal for them.
Your standard agreement and our, if you notice, our congregant mills have increased, our rate has increased for both mills.
Which is unexpected with the cost of groceries being up. But were there any other concerns the contractor set has to change?
Just kind of fill in the blank and change the date.
Well, if there are no further questions, then I'd like to make the motion to approve the sub-recipient agreement between Grimes County and Brazos Valley Area Agency on aging.
There's a motion before the court on Agenda Item Number 21 by Commissioner Barbara Walker, seconded by Commissioner Philip Cox. Is there further discussion? In hearing none, all in favor say aye. Aye, opposed, that motion carries. We'll go to Agenda Item Number 22, review and take action to approve cooperative agreement between Texas A&amp;M AgriLife Extension Service and Grimes County. Our attachment Number 22. And again, this is, correct me if I'm wrong, this is our standard agreement, and nothing other than the dates have really changed, to my understanding.
That's my understanding, Judge.
Maybe it's my new employee.
Yes, I'm sorry.
We don't have any concerns.
With that, I'm going to make a motion to approve Agenda Item Number 22. Second. There's a motion before the court on Agenda Item Number 22 by County Judge Joe Fout, seconded by Commissioner David Dobianski. Is there further discussion? Hearing none, all in favor say aye. Aye, opposed. Please note, that's a 4-0. Commissioner Walker had stepped up for just a moment. Agenda Item Number 23... Agenda Item Number Twenty-three. Consider and approve the second contract renewal agreement between Grimes County and Apres Inc., which is the Savens, S A V N S, for fiscal year twenty twenty-two, and authorize the county judge as signatory. That's our attachment number twenty-three. Again, this is just an annual renewal document that we handled. This is the second contract renewal.
Yes.
I move to approve the second contract renewal agreement between Grimes County and Apres Inc. for fiscal year twenty twenty-two, authorize county judge as signatory.
Second.
There's a motion before the court on Agenda Item Number Twenty-three by Commissioner Chad Mallett, seconded by Commissioner Philip Cox. Is there further discussion? Hearing none, all in favor say aye. Aye, opposed? Motion carries. Let the record show, it's a four-oh vote. Commissioner Walker's not here. And I don't think she's walked out. I think she just took a quick little break and went home for just a minute. Just a minute. Just before Agenda Item. These barbecue sandwiches taste pretty good, don't they?
Pretty barbecue sandwich?
No, he doesn't do that.
They weren't ready. They weren't ready.
I asked about leftovers, and he said he sold out yesterday, so. Business is good, no count on him.
I'm starting to wonder if it was just a stand-up response to the maintenance guy. No, we don't have anything for yous down there.
I'm kind of on hold for you. That's all right. We had a key element here. Agenda Item Number Twenty-four. You want me to catch you up on Twenty-Two?
So.
Okay, all right. Agenda Item Twenty-four. Consider and take action to approve the twenty twenty-two tax assessment collection agreement and authorize the county judge as signatory. It's our agreement. Attachment twenty-four. Again, it's our standard renewal document. And I'd ask that you keep that office in your prayers. They lost a very key member of their working family over there. Very, very difficult time for them.
Camper Ritz was office manager.
She passed away. Yeah, yeah. So, that's a real hit to that department, it really is. I'm making a motion on Agenda Item Number Twenty-four. I'm making a motion on Agenda Item Number Twenty-four to consider and take action to approve the twenty twenty-two tax assessment collection agreement and authorize the county judge as signatory. There's a motion before the court on Agenda Item Number Twenty-four by County Judge Joe Fowth, seconded by Commissioner Barbara Walker. Is there further discussion? Hearing none, all in favor say aye. Aye.
Judge, I'm going to ask you, I'm not sure if we saw that the agreement with Texas AgriLife Extension Office, the dates needed to be changed.
Well, I made them mention to her that everything's the same except for the date. And she nodded yes, so they do need to make that change. But thank you for saying that out loud also. We go to Agenda Item Number Twenty-five. Consider the proposed budget for FY twenty twenty-one, twenty twenty-two, and take action to adopt the budget with record vote, record vote pursuant to Local Government Code one one, one point zero, zero, eight. And a note, as our agenda says, the budget must be adopted before the tax rate pursuant to Local Government Code one 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 point oh, one oh. I'm going to make a motion to consider proposed budget for FY twenty twenty-one, twenty-two, and take action to adopt the budget with a record vote pursuant to Local Government Code one 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 point oh, oh, eight.
Judge, with the changes that were mentioned in the public hearing?
Thank you, okay. To consider the proposed budget with the changes that were discussed and made during the public hearing this morning, to be considered as part of that budget. Because there's, I have a second.
Second.
There's a motion before the court on Agenda Item Number Twenty-five, County Judge Joe Fowth, seconded by Commissioner David Dobianski. I'm now open for discussion. Is there discussion?
I think you.
Hearing none, I'm going to take a record vote. Commissioner Mallett, how do you vote? Commissioner Dobianski, Precinct Two.
Aye.
Commissioner Walker, Precinct Three.
Aye.
Commissioner Cox, Precinct Four.
Aye.
And the county judge votes aye. It's a five-oh vote. Thank you, commissioners. Consider and take action to adopt the tax rate with a record vote.
Are you ready to make this?
For Grimes County for tax year twenty twenty-one percent, to Local Government Code one four one point oh, one oh, as follows, our attachment twenty-six. All right. Let me make sure I do this correctly. Whereas Commissioners Court of Grimes County has published a notice for the proposed property tax rate for the twenty twenty-one tax year, and conducted any required public hearings concerning the proposed property tax rate, and whereas Chapter Twenty-Six of the Property Tax Code requires the Commissioners Court of Grimes County to adopt the tax rate, therefore, be it considered by Commissioners Court of Grimes County that, one, we the Commissioners Court of Grimes County do hereby adopt the tax rate per one hundred taxable valuation for Grimes County for tax year twenty twenty-one as follows. Zero point five two six nine three three for purposes of maintenance and operations. Zero point zero 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 for payment of debt service. Total tax rate will be zero point five two six nine three three. We the Commissioners Court of Grimes County do hereby authorize the tax assessor-collector for Grimes County to assess and collect taxes for the tax year twenty twenty-one, employing the above tax rate. Three, this tax rate will raise more taxes for maintenance and operations than last year's tax rate. Four, the tax rate will be effectively, excuse me, the tax rate will effectively be raised by three point seven six percent and will raise taxes for maintenance and operations on a hundred thousand dollar home by approximately zero point zero zero. Adopted by Commissioners Court on this, the fifteenth day of September twenty twenty-one. Mr. Fowth, have I appropriately done that?
Yes, sir.
That also has to be stated in a motion as well?
I don't believe it. I'm sorry?
Does it have to be stated in a motion?
All of it, you said?
Yes. Well, not all of it, but I bet it will raise the three percent, three point seven six percent. It used to, I thought. I don't know if it's. They changed some of the language on it, Commissioner.
If you want to include in the motion, just include the motion.
So, we've considered and to take action, is there a motion?
I make the motion, we adopt the tax rate with a record vote for Grimes County for the tax year twenty twenty-one pursuant to the Local Government Code one four one point zero one zero as follows. We the Commissioners Court of Grimes County do hereby adopt the tax rate per a hundred dollar taxable valuation of Grimes County for the tax year twenty twenty-one as follows. Zero point five two six nine three three for the purpose of maintenance and operation. Zero point zero 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 for the payment of debt services. Zero point five two six nine three three total tax rate.
Is there a second? Second motion. There's a motion before the court by Commissioner Barbara Walker, seconded by Commissioner David Dobianski. Commissioner Mallett, how do you vote?
Aye.
Commissioner Dobianski, how do you vote?
Aye.
Commissioner Walker, how do you vote?
Aye.
Commissioner Cox, how do you vote?
Aye.
County judge, how do you vote?
Aye.
That's a five-oh count. Again, thank you, commissioners. Go to Agenda Item Number Twenty-seven. Consider and take action regarding the burn ban and authorize the county judge as signatory. I've struggled over this because I thought we were going to get more rain than we did, but I know that we've had some coverage over the entire county, not to the degree most people wanted. Mr. Lillard, do you have a recommendation?
We've, I've seen a little bit of an increase, I would say, in the number of fires, grass fires, and debris fires that people are calling in for, but none of them have become major issues. We've lost most structures in the last month or so, which is a very good thing. Fire departments are very capable, as usual, in responding to these quickly and getting them under control, so. My way of describing it, Judge, is, as you know, my favorite phrase is cautiously optimistic. So, again, I agree with you. I wish we'd seen more rain from that storm, but, you know, at this time, you know, it's at the court's discretion, is the way you want to go on a burn ban, but I think we're looking okay at the moment.
I'm going to recommend that we take no action, but I'd like the court to be on standby in the event things go downhill or dry out. Again, we'll be prepared for an emergency meeting before next regular Commissioners Court. That's an agreement? Okay. So, no action on Twenty-seven. Twenty-eight, receive any updates on the strategic plan. Hearing none, we'll go to Agenda Item Number Twenty-nine. Is there a motion to adjourn? There's a motion before the court on Agenda Item Twenty-nine to adjourn by Commissioner Barbara Walker, seconded by Commissioner David Dobianski. Discussion? Hearing none, all in favor say aye. Aye, opposed? Motion carries. Eleven oh five.